Welcome. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. And I just ask that our superintendent please confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. We recognize a quorum of our board. We have six members present, and Tony Schmidt has an excused absence tonight. Next, we will consider approval of our agenda, which was published in advance. I would move approval of this agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll give that one to Nancy. Motion and second to approve the agenda? It was a tie, sorry, Mellie. We'll give you the next one, I promise. All right. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. We have an approved agenda. And our next agenda item is a fun recognition, and that is for the West girls tennis state qualifiers. And I believe Erin Felber, our Director of West Athletics, is going to kick off this item. Good evening.
Good evening, hello. I'm excited to be here today to honor Christina and Ashley. And we have Coach Natalie Blaze, who's going to come up and say a little bit about the girls.
Thank you to the board for recognizing these two outstanding athletes and allowing me a few moments to also recognize their huge accomplishments this season. Ashley, who is just a sophomore, made it to sectionals last year. She missed going to state by a small margin, got a bad seed, ended up playing the team that actually won the entire state tournament. But this year, they took care of that. They played the same team, they played Nina, and they had different results this year. Last year as well, Christina Jones was a singles player, and she was always our one or two singles player. So putting together our one doubles player with our one singles player, that's, well, their nickname is Crash for Christina and Ashley, but we really crashed them together, and they were extremely successful. So they had an outstanding season. They went 17 and 12. They had the good fortune of drawing a seed against Fond du Lac in a tournament that we play in. They ended up winning in a third set tiebreaker, 12-4. And that win, among other wins they had this year, placed them as the two seed in the subsectionals. That two seed, they played Nina again in this year with much better results, having won again in a third set tiebreaker. They won 10-4. They advanced to sectionals from there, and then on to state. So in addition to their state qualifier accomplishments, they were also third team all-conference in what is the most difficult tennis conference in the state. They were both recognized as MVPs for our tennis team this year. And they're just all-around amazing players and teammates. So they have very, very bright futures in tennis. So congratulations, Ashley Wick and Christina Jones.
Thank you for joining us. It's a very, very impressive accomplishment. And I played a little tennis in my earlier days in doubles. It's a really interesting version of tennis to watch and to play. And it's very, very impressive. So thank you for coming and joining us tonight. Congratulations. All right. We now move on to public participation. And I have one public participation comment card. Oh, I should pause before we do public participation. It is totally fine if individuals at this time who came for the recognition portion wish to sneak out. That's totally fine. We welcome everyone to stay, but you're free to leave. We totally understand. Thank you so much for attending tonight. With that, I have one public participation comment card. Are there any other ones to present? I don't see any. All right. And our participant tonight is Mr. Bill Schultz. And so, Mr. Schultz, I know that you are familiar with Board Policy 187. I am very willing to read it if you wish me to do that, to familiarize yourself with it. Otherwise, I'm good waiving it unless they're waiving the reading of it, unless my fellow board members object. I don't see any objections. Mr. Schultz, welcome. I see that you filled out the comment card completely. So the next three minutes are yours.
Could you please read the public 187?
Absolutely.
Just for common practice, please.
Absolutely. All right. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda, where Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. As summarized the policy at this time, the copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as a guarantee of fair and timely response. So with that, Mr. Schultz, I invite you to speak, and the next three minutes would be yours.
Thanks for reading that, Chris.
Sure.
I'm here tonight to discuss comments that have been made in the public forums such as this, as well as the budget. Last, in September, after community members voted against me at our annual meeting, I saw and heard a lot of people that voted no to more funding towards school safety make the same comment. School safety is very important. What they say and how they vote completely contradict each other. If school safety was as important as they claim, I don't know why it didn't pass. Am I an expert in school safety and best practices towards such? I wouldn't go that far, but I'm far more educated than anyone else would ever give me credit for. I've done just a few Google searches, just a few more Google searches than some may think. I've had multiple hour-long conversations with the experts, such as these people want involved in this situation, such as Police Chief Tim Daring, Superintendent Jen Wimmer, Superintendent Andy Sarnow, as well as local safety consultants and police officers in our community. In my travels across the state, as a truck driver, I may add, I've also discussed this issue with state troopers, as well as local and state leaders and legislators. To be slandered and have people make these comments about me that I need to do my research is ridiculous, dishonest, and absurd. Perhaps these individuals were staring into a mirror when these comments were made. To take an excerpt out of a letter to the editor that was written about me, "Mr. Schultz, had your amendment stated $200,000 to be appropriately allocated by police for school safety measures, I absolutely would have stood with you." So you know what? Let's do that. Let's put $200,000 in our community service fund that would be put towards enhancing school safety. If this amendment is drafted tonight and presented, and if any of you vote no on this, this is not only telling myself, but the community as well, how school safety isn't of top priority like some of you may think. I also like to find it, I also find it ironic how an individual is trying to keep our schools safer, our students safer, our staff, faculty, and administrators safer, is labeled as an anti-education teacher hater. While I have 30 seconds left, as far as policy, I would like it to be discussed, added to a future policy committee meeting. Jen Wimmer, Board President Chris Weigert, Joel Ongert, and John Donaldson, I would like there to be discussion around whichever policy it would be regarding school board member attendance. I don't think it's fair that as a taxpayer, I have to pay for school board members who are constantly not present. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All right, that was our only public participation comment card. So with that, we'll consider the public participation section over, and we will move then to our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have a number of items. The minutes of the October 10, 2022, regular board meeting and executive session. We have two contracts, one resignation, no retirements. And then items related to start, college now courses, early college credit courses, and a safety drill review. Are there any questions on any of the individual items on the consent agenda? Otherwise, I would move approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. The motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. We move then on to reports. And we have our superintendent's report. And I know the superintendent noted on the agenda, invitation for remarks by West Bend Police Chief Daring. Welcome.
Hi. As you noted, Captain Rollinger is also hiding in the audience over there, as well as Chief Daring. The board is getting ready for an upcoming work session regarding school safety. We've scheduled that. You'll be announcing it later of November 22 with everyone welcome at the ESC. Again, it's a board work session, so it's not this formal stage, but more a place where we can talk. You talked last time around having actual first responders, those reporting and responding to us during those times to be present. We've invited chiefs, representatives from EMS as well, and everyone gladly accepted those invitations. Last week, I think, really brought more safety to mind when everyone in southeast Wisconsin felt like we're victims of swatting. I know we sent some communications out, but it just, again, draws attention to everyone, whether you're a staff member, a parent, a community member. Are we prepared? What do we do? And so, just a reiteration, and we'll get into it a little bit more during our work session, but we do train with each other. Certainly in our careers, we've probably seen an evolution of a lot of different trainings, but we do have a standard protocol response that we do use. We train with each other. There's some pieces out there. If parents want to visit our student handbooks, and you can see some of those pieces. And then we work across districts collaboratively as well. So I know with that in the news, and as we prepare for that board work session, the chief just offered to come in and give some remarks about general safety, and then we'd be open to feedback as we plan for that upcoming work session. What you would like to see as goals of that session and our time together with first responders. Chief?
Thank you. Members of the board, thanks for having me. I think we're extremely fortunate to live in a community that does value public safety, values education. Appreciate your comments, Mr. Schultz. And we did have several conversations. And that is something that the district is committed to and has been committed to. So I want me to maybe disagree with you, but we have a long history. I've been in West Bend for 20, coming up on 28 years, and we've always been blessed with a very tight relationship with the school district working. Something that I assumed occurred in every district. I was somewhat disappointed to find out that's not the case. Just as an example, this week, when we had the swatting incident, it was actually Superintendent Wimmer who advised me about the incidents that were occurring, because she had had some conversations across districts, quick conversation with Captain Rollinger. And by the time we were advised by the state Intelligence Bureau, we already had an officer in every school parking lot. We had our school liaisons on alert. So it's that type of collaboration that isn't waiting and reactive. It's more talking. Emily Malmstrm and I were texting this morning about an incident that occurred on Friday and making sure that our officers were prepared and the administration was working as a team. Those are two very tiny examples of something that occurs every day. It occurs within this district. Our district is committed to that safety as well as the police department. So we have four full-time school liaison officers deployed in the West Bend school district. That's not anything new. That's a long history of having four full-time, three for sure, full-time school liaisons. And then with this board's blessing and conversations, we added that fourth, when we realized that there was a gap between after-school activities, and it's a four. Just comparatively speaking, Wauwatosha has nearly 7,000 students. They have four school liaison officers. Brookfield has over 7,000. They have two and are adding a third. Fond du Lac has 6,600 students. They have five school liaison officers, one at each high school and one at each of their three middle schools. Anne Shaboygan has nearly 10,000 students, have five full-time school liaison officers. So West Bend having four school liaison officers, and I'm sure we'll talk more about that at the work meetings, is, I feel very comfortable that we've dedicated that staff, that resources, taxpayers' money, to make sure that we have that strong presence in the school. I don't want to take too much of your time, because I know you have an agenda, but I would just like to give you our philosophy towards school safety. It is a pillar of our mission. We talk about it on a daily basis within our mission to protect and serve the community. It's a pillar. We work under a crisis management cycle of prevention, response, and recovery. We spend, hopefully, 95% of our efforts, 95% of our efforts in prevention. So when you see us talking and engaging the community and our stakeholders, our teachers, our staff, our parents, our students, and see something, say something, that's prevention. That's defining a culture within our community, within our district, that says that is not tolerated here, and we're all going to be involved in the safety of the community and our district and our students. When we talk about our zero tolerance policy, the police department, we've been vocal about it, and I stand by it. We have a zero tolerance policy towards any threats to our school, any violence in our school, any hoax of threats or violence. We have zero tolerance. We've worked with our human services departments, so they understand our approach. Initially, there was some pushback, wanting to know why we were arresting all these kids who made a very unfortunate comment. And I was very clear with them, because we know when we have an arrest, it's not for punishment, it's to make sure services are available. An arrest of a juvenile triggers a statutorily required threat assessment, follow-up with parents, in-house meeting, and if not, then there's consequences. So we know that is our way of guaranteeing they get services. I know it can sometimes come across that we're looking for punishment. Not the case. We're looking to intervene to make sure that we get the services available, but also to make sure that it's understood. We have a culture of safety. Our mission is to provide safe and efficient educational environment where teachers can teach and students can learn. So our school liaison officers will always be in uniform when they're working for me, because I think it's important that that symbol of authority is there. Our officers are identified. They've formed a relationship with the kids, with the students, with the staff, to make sure that our community knows our police officers are servants, public servants for the community. That mitigation and response is something we hope to never use, but because we know it's a very low-frequency event, a statistical anomaly of school violence, right? We hear about it because it's such a tragic and heart-wrenching event, but it's still, if you look at the number of students in schools and education systems within our country, it's still a minor, not tolerated. But so it's a low-frequency event, but a high-complexity event. So in our training priorities and our matrix, we know that's something we're going to train a lot. So we do. And so our response and mitigation to reduce harm talks a lot about that active threat training. This district and the police department hosted a countywide active attack training this summer, actually run by Captain Rollinger, that got all of law enforcement and fire departments together to train as a team, as one team, to know how to react to those calls, because, again, we hope we never use it, but we're prepared. We devoted a significant amount of our resources, our budget, towards making sure that our officers have the equipment, equipment that I hope they never have to use. But we have it, because we know when that time comes, we'll be called to respond, and we will respond. We will respond, and we will end that threat. Our police presence with the school liaison officers, with our continuing relationship with our county, our other jurisdictions, certainly Jackson Police Department feels very strongly the same way. I spoke with Chief Osbueil this afternoon and knows what my comments were going to be here tonight, and 100% agrees and has that commitment in Jackson as well. Working with our rescue task forces, our communication, that's our response. But again, our goal is point in time. If we're responding, we failed. We want to make sure that we have that culture of safety, that it's not going to be tolerated here. And then finally, that recovery piece, which is how do we reduce the time to normalization, right? Should something happen? Should a swatting event happen? Should the hoax, those things? How do we get back to a safe and effective educational environment? And that's where we train strongly with the reunification process with our staff, our post-incident investigations. We, Superintendent Wimmer and some of her staff, my full supervisory staff, just attended together collaboratively a state-run reunification standard protocol training hosted by the police department. I'm getting to that point where I feel like I'm bragging. I don't want it to be that way. That's, most of you know me long enough to know that's not who I am, but I feel like maybe because we take our safety so seriously, we also take it as our burden, and we don't want to share that. We don't want to really talk about all those things we do to prepare. We assume you know them. But part of it is we take that on, so you don't know. I felt after some of the conversations in our community lately that I just wanted to come, I guess, and make sure that you were aware that it is a pillar of our mission to protect and serve the community. Most of you who know me also know that you'll have to shut the mic off at some moment, or I'll continue talking. So I will, I'm sure we'll have further conversations.
So as we said, you know, it's a time where we have the chief here, captain here, some things. When we think about the work session ahead, knowing that you'll have not only this chief, but our Jackson chief, as well as the fire chiefs with us that evening, and talking about kind of general school safety, all of those things, planning for the now, planning for the future, you know, any feedback from the team? You've given us preliminary feedback, what you'd like to see out of that board work session. You certainly can reach out to either one of us in the interim, but was there any feedback this evening that's top of mind for you to share?
I guess, I think we've heard tonight how many officers we have, and I agree. I've had students in the district for a very long time, and I've always felt very safe. Thank you, you know, to you and your fellow officers. But I would like to see a little bit out of that work session, and I'm going to say this a little guarded, but if money were no object, what would be the dream for you as our chief to tell us, this is, this would be, money's no object. This is what I want at every single school, or this would be the appropriate number of officers, or whatever that is. But I, you know, again, kind of just that caveat, if money's no object, here's what I want to see. And also assuming that you just have oodles of staff to provide as well. So, you know, if those hurdles are out of your way, what is that dream for you? And then, you know, obviously, what is the bare minimum for you? And I'm assuming that, obviously, as you stated, you know, you're feeling fairly comfortable with where we are, or comfortable with where we are. I'm not suggesting we would ever drop below that. But, you know, I think for the rest of the population, though, to know, like, one officer would not be sufficient, you know, so that people could understand that, to say, gee, maybe seven officers is the dream, one would be unacceptable. So I'd kind of like to see something like that.
So hearing you just around, not only the staffing, but that other piece was, if money were not an object, what are, you know, we talked about, you know, first, you're securing the envelope of the building. We're looking at doors. We're looking at this. What's this kind of state-of-the-art systems as well that are needed to be in attention to that? Okay? Thank you.
And I'll maybe just piggyback on that from the reverse angle. Times have changed. Threats are different. I mean, there's the social media. Maybe, you know, it would be good for us just to have a refresher of, what are you and your colleagues in the, you know, in the law enforcement field seeing as it relates to the threats that maybe weren't the same, you know, when I went to high school in the dark ages? So that would be helpful and informative.
So context for current environment regarding those behaviors?
Yeah, and I think that's helpful as we talk about resources that are needed. It's, well, what's the threat? What are the resources that might be needed to address it? Kind of the other half of that equation. Other thoughts, questions, suggestions for the work session?
Again, even if they're top of my, not top of mind right now, please reach out to me. I'll be in contact with chief and captain as we plan that. We'll put together an agenda, kind of purpose for that, make sure it kind of meets your expectations as we move forward. That will be, again, at the end of November for us. So I just have a few more items. If they don't need anything else from you, I'll continue standing here. I have a few more items to update. But again, thanks for that feedback. I think it helps us plan productive work sessions when we're digging in, in that format, and can have great and can have great conversations. Again, we'll have representatives from police sheriff and first responders with our fire departments. High school postseason athletic updates. So East volleyball won their WIA regional by beating Hartford last Saturday. The team now moves on to sectionals against Manitowoc-Lincoln on Thursday, the 27th, at 7:00 PM at Watertown High School. The East football team won its first-round playoff 21-7 over McFarland. It was a gorgeous evening for football last Friday. That's the first playoff win for East football since 2008. They now play Mount Hora-Barnaveld on Friday, October 28th, 7:00 PM at Mount Hora High School. Just a note, I know we posted it on social media, but just for everyone in the public, you know, when we put things out on Facebook, we got hit, and in the comments, people were putting fake links to where to see those broadcasts. Again, if that's not posted on our Facebook, it's, you know, don't pick it up from comments, don't pick it up anywhere else. We'll make sure you get that information when it becomes available to us. So just a warning, because again, threats are different this way, and there was some activity we saw this weekend with false links, trying to bait people. So Ethan Hackman and Nathan Butters of West Cross Country Team and Sarah Birkin from the East Cross Country Team qualified for WIA State Championships. Sarah, Ethan, and Nathan will compete in Wisconsin Rapids on Saturday, October 29th. So in addition to some athletic accomplishments, academic accolades for our golfers. So the Golf Coaches Association of Wisconsin announced recently that five student athletes from the West Bend High School's girls co-op team earned Academic All-State by achieving a cumulative GPA of 3.25 or higher and participating in 75% or more of the varsity matches. So in fact, the average cumulative GPA of the five West Bend co-op honorees is at 3.8, so they are clearly above even that standard. So that's Maddie Bell, Eleanor Henshaw, Addison Landy earn high honors designation, and Caleb Ruder and Cindy Clemmons earn honors designation. So just congratulations, not only for your athletic accomplishments, but also your academic ones. And our high school band concert's coming up November 1st. The West Bend High School's indoor marching band scholarship concert will be held Tuesday, November 1st. It's action-packed night of high-energy marching band performance, choreography, color guard, and drum line. It's the only high school concert where they charge a mission, but it's for a great cause. 100% of the proceeds go to the scholarship fund that's used to send the high school students to summer music camps and clinics. So check out social media or high school websites for the link to buy tickets for that event, or you can buy them at the door as well. That concludes my announcements. Any other questions for me?
Sorry, not trying to put you on the spot, but is there, just because someone might be interested, is there a fan bus for the students for the football game?
Like, I don't know, I'll have to check.
Oh, Mr. Sarno might know, though, he has.
I'll get a text.
We know a bus person who might be able to help us.
I'm sure they'll try.
I was working with the A.D. earlier today, we're working on that. And then as well, there's even, so between students as well as some parents or grandparents that may be uncomfortable driving that far, that we're even exploring maybe like just a general fan bus in addition to a student bus, just some safety things there that we're working on.
Excellent. So if that information, that would become available on social media, I assume as well?
We'll work on, make sure we work on communicating with that.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else for me?
Any other questions for Superintendent Wimmer? All right, thank you for your report, and thank you to the captain and to the chief for attending as well, appreciate it. Look forward to the work session. All right. We're on to school reports for Jackson and McLean, and I believe Dr. Jill Reese is going to introduce this segment. Good evening.
Good evening. Just to get you started, we have two schools presenting tonight, so it's Jackson and McLean. And Mrs. Darcy Van Adistine will present for Jackson and Mr. Andy Kasek for McLean. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Darcy Van Adistine here. I am in my fourth year at Jackson Elementary as a principal there and ninth year in the district as an administrator in the district. So welcome. I wanted to piggyback before I go into my little presentation about Jackson, just to actually brag about our Jackson Police Department, too. They're as wonderful as our West Bend Police Department, as we know. Some cool things that they're doing at Jackson is they come into our building three to four times, sometimes five times a week, just because they love us and they love seeing the littles, to do walkthroughs of the whole building. They'll check in with myself or the office staff at front just to say, hey, anything that we should be aware of, anything you want us to check out? Sometimes it's around doors, and they give us feedback, and then they'll go in to the library and read some books with the kids, and they'll go in the lunchroom and maybe try to take a teeter-tot from someone. So they're trying to build relationships. So we also do lunch with the law monthly, so we draw students' names based on like our incentive, and then they get to eat lunch on stage with three officers, so that's pretty exciting for them. And they're just wanting to do more and more in the school. They're wanting to come in the classrooms more, teach little mini lessons potentially, so we're going to pursue some more things like that. They just want to showcase how our police officers help people. That's the focus, they want to help people. So the more we can get them in our buildings, the better. And they play football with them at the end of the day, so. Yeah. Okay. Here we go with Jackson Elementary. I'm going to talk a little bit about our student learning and how we're focusing on making sure every single student enhances their proficiency throughout the year. And then going into engagement, and I'm going to focus on staff engagement, just as we're building the year, how are we getting behind our staff and enhancing their engagement? And then we'll go into safe and secure, how we're creating more of a sense of belonging within our students and how they are having wraparound supports both academically and socially, and some highlights at the end. So with literacy, I have a chart here, you're going to follow kind of the color code. So what we're doing is we're growing our readers 5% per grade level. So we used to do it where it would be like we'd take an assessment in the fall and then in the spring, and we want to grow them 5% from the fall of this year to the spring of this year. However, we wanted to challenge ourselves more and follow the cohort. So we want to build, for instance, our first graders this year, how they ended kindergarten in spring, we want to grow them 5% of how they ended kindergarten until how they end here in spring. Because there's a lot of growth that usually happens from fall to spring, but from like the spring marking points, those are usually your highest ones. So that's kind of how these charts reflect with the arrows. So we want to grow our learners. One area that we know we need, have a focus for, and it's similar across the district, is our second graders. So they're still our kiddos from pandemic and as well. And you can see they're, they have a new baseline for this fall assessments this year because they take a slightly different assessment. They had an early literature assessment in K1, and now they take the star reading. So their baseline is actually fall. So they need some growth there. So we have some extra pieces that we're putting in, especially in second grade, but one of them is expanding our tier-two push-in model, so we have more adults, literacy-focused adults going into the classroom, helping all the students in there versus pulling out for just for tier-two interventions. So we're all hands on deck, especially in second grade and in other grade levels as well. We have our literacy coaching, so our literacy specialist does a fantastic job of meeting with our different grade levels on a specific skill that teachers can do to grow their own knowledge, to help our kids grow in their proficiency. And we meet twice monthly for literacy professional learning communities that I'm also a part of with our lit specialists, just to know what are the goals and what are the specific strategies to grow our kids? And then we also are going to start doing our learning walks. So if one teacher has a strength in one area and another teacher is like, oh, I just really want to figure out how to hone in on my mini lessons and how to get them real concise, then we can say, you know what, this teacher does it great. Let's use our building solve or a different kind of prep time for you to be able to go into that classroom to observe a colleague. So we're starting to do that more. And then also at our staff meetings, sharing out of best practices, anybody who has a best practice. Maybe it's myself or a literacy specialist, or someone else notices a colleague doing something great, and so we have them share out that with their other colleagues as well. And then we're starting to integrate Lexia across our K4, and they're really enjoying that program. And then soon we'll start to dabble into Amira to help with those supplementary digital tools to support our kiddos and their individualized learning goals. And then in math, similar, we're following it by the cohort, so how they did last year, at the end of last year, to how they will be doing at the end of this coming year, to grow 5% per grade level. And last year, I did a presentation about how our second graders, they were originally in the fall for math at 27.9%, and at the end, so it's actually a third grade right there colored, last year they ended as second graders at 54.7%. So you can see how we have intentional focus within our professional learning communities with staff, how we can really start to grow our students. So math's very similar in what we're doing with our actions around there. Another thing we're doing is a collaboration with CISA 6 to just make sure that we're using the features, all the enhanced features that our Bridges curriculum has to offer as well. And we go into engagement and customer satisfaction. I'm focusing on staff engagement because this is the start of the year, and what we did to kind of wrap around staff, they gave feedback and pulled out some of the main areas that we were lower on, on our staff engagement survey from last year, and one of them was just opportunity to provide input, finding different ways for that, building a culture of positive recognition among one another, and the feedback that they receive from myself. So those are our three goal areas with staff engagement, so me just wanting to make sure that staff identify what is it that they really want feedback on this year, and tailoring it to their needs, and then going in, doing that, and giving them feedback right away. More of a conversational style to impact their own professional well-being. And then a culture of positive recognition, we do staff shout-outs, and we announce them weekly. Our PTO helps with supplementing a prize for our staff, so that's week, sorry, weekly staff shout-outs. And then we also do traveling trophies, so different ways to just encourage staff recognition. And just engaging the staff wellness. So we have a wonderful site wellness team, they're doing great things for our staff, they have salad lunches, workout Wednesdays, we do after-school staff like yoga, stretching, anything we can do to help with the mind and body, well-being of our staff as well. And then with safe and secure, focusing on student belonging, and we have a student survey we give to all students this fall, teachers are giving it right now, and then we'll give it again in spring, just to see, are they connecting with teachers? Do they have someone that they can connect with? Do they have a peer that they can call a friend? Those are the, two of the biggest questions for our elementary kiddos. Do you have a friend at school? Do you have an adult you can go to and trust? Those two questions and how they answer that really connects to their sense of belonging and liking school, wanting to be at school. So based on those results, then what we do is, as a team, we look at that, and do we need to match up some mentors? There are some kids that said, I don't know who I can go to. All right, we need to get that kiddo a adult mentor within the building and have that person check in with them. Or even student social groups, if they said, I don't have any friends. How can we leverage that and how can we start building those friendships and those skills that they need to help maintain those friendships? So we're doing some great work around that sense of belonging. And also our goal-setting with students who, like, we do a frequent checks as three, if they've gotten three office referrals in three weeks, then that kind of flags on our end that, hey, what's some, what more supports do we need for the students and for the teachers to make sure that they're successful? So we have a really great wraparound supports for our kids. And then a few things that we love at Jackson, that we excel at well, our Battle of the Books is a huge one, our Jackson Jinglers and being able to go to perform at different events, our community service team, we have a great connection with our community, they come in the building and we go out to them as well. Our spirit dress-up days are very memorable as our school-wide incentives, and just our book buddies, we partner like, fourth grade will come and read to kindergarten, and kindergarten will read to fourth grade, so we make sure we have those peer-to-peer connections as well. And that's kind of the gist of Jackson Elementary so far for the start of the school year. Any questions?
Appreciate it very much, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you for your time.
Absolutely, thank you for yours.
Yeah, and next up is Andy Kasek for McLean.
Mr. Kasek, good evening.
Well, good evening, everybody. I feel like the guy who just keeps on coming back because Darcy says she's been in the district nine years, I'm going on 25 or 26. So I appreciate everybody being here and taking the time. So again, as Darcy had mentioned before, we will be going through the pillars of the district as far as safe and secure, effective, efficient, engagement, and student learning. So tonight I'm going to start out with our literacy at McLean. And again, you will see similarities from where Jackson is and other buildings, so we are being measured by 5% through literacy, through our universal screener. And in the chart that you see, the left-hand score is our fall score from our star assessment, universal screener, and our goal score for the end of the year. All right? And so what I did this evening is added in what our teams are actually doing to begin the year. So kindergarten, first, second, third, and fourth. So we have found in kindergarten that the phonemic awareness, that is blending sounds, that is letter sounds, letter identification, that is a need in kindergarten. That kind of filters through many of the grade levels. So these goals that you are seeing right now are what the teams are working on in their team meetings with our literacy coaches and myself. So first grade, they're supporting students in their writing and reading, working on the question of why. Why does this character display this? What is this character and why would we feel this way in a book? In second grade, continuing focus on the phonemic awareness, and we're using that information to create individual one-on-one or small group meetings. Third grade, we're coming back to the writing about reading, detailed responses and what those look like, and again, meeting with small groups of students and really working on that skill-building. And then in fourth grade, they're actually working on memoirs with skill and strategy grouping, one-on-one group, alignment of quick-check assessments is something that our fourth grade is really honing in on at this point in time because that's going to give that rapid feedback to our students right then and there. Okay? And then we move on to math. You're going to see a blank space in kindergarten because kindergartners do not take a math assessment at this point in time. So you will see those measurements in the square again. Again, the left-hand side is the fall score, and our goal score for the end of the year is on the right-hand side. And again, you will see each individual goal, and what we have done this year is our building leadership team is kind of taking over that, the goal for math. We have representation from every grade level on that team, and because math has been, our Bridges math curriculum has been with us for several years now, we found it important that we can have that vertical articulation, those conversations within our building leadership team meetings, and that we can find some gaps that we need to fill in within those conversations. Within that conversation, McLean, we are going to be working with CISA 6 as well. We have three meetings set, November, February, and then in May, because the, actually, the individuals at CISA 6 were math coaches here in the district when Bridges was adopted, so we're going to kind of dig into that a little bit more to increase our proficiency in math moving forward. So again, the digital tools, kindergarten, as you can see, I really want to focus on that because within our assessment, we found across the board that measurement and data, numbers and operations were a critical, those are critical skills that our students continue to, are in need of support. The digital tools are allowing us to dig into that a little bit deeper as well. So again, all of that data, teachers are being able to develop those one-on-one conversations as well as a small group. Okay? As we move forward, our engagement and customer satisfaction, this is something that I guess I am most proud of because when we talk about our engagement within our district, and I want to focus on that to begin with. August 10th was a really pivotal moment for myself, being a veteran of this district in multiple capacities. Really on August 10th, it was a district-wide leadership day. Every leadership team came to a meeting over at the high school, and we, we really had transparent conversations about what it really was like in our district. And district trusted us, Dr. Reese, Wimmer, everybody. They trusted us as an elementary team to collaborate together, to gather the information from all of our buildings and present it to every leadership team there. It was really for me the first time that I felt comfortable in sharing the information and people not second-guessing, all right? Is this really what it is about? And so I commend our district leadership for allowing us to do that, to have that autonomy to share that with our teams. And then that leads us into the professional learning for all staff. We call it the playbook. This allows district members to discuss literacy, discuss math, discuss discipline within the classroom. And this is presented not by our ESC staff alone, it is presented by teachers. And when we talk about having that trust and understanding what happens in the classroom arena, who better than to talk about it than classroom teachers and delivering that message? And Darcy actually discussed that a little bit about going on those classroom visits because we all have strengths. because we all have strengths and we all have to have that belief that we can present that as professionals. So I just wanted to ensure that everybody understands that district engagement, it really is funneling down into our buildings, allowing us as administrators and teachers to have more say into what we really need and what we really want within the classroom and our buildings. Okay? And then in building engagement, we are all in need of, of working on things that we are unaware of. So off of our engagement survey last year, staff indicated they want more opportunity to have input in the workplace decisions. Absolutely. So in meeting those needs, some all-staff questionnaires going out. What's, what is the way that you like to be recognized? Everybody always thinks that they want to be face-to-face, stand up in front of everybody. That's not everybody's, everybody's comfortability. So it could be a text, it could be a phone call, it could be an email, it could be a written note. So that's very important to me so I understand where everybody is coming from. A culture of positive recognition, that kind of goes hand-in-hand, but it also goes to our colleagues as well. McLean's a big building and so we have two floors and sometimes our fourth graders up in the upper west, northwest corner, don't get to talk to my first grade teachers in the southeast corner. So again, recognizing that and allowing people to recognize each other for the great work that they do. I'm satisfied with my current workload. I think everybody can have a conversation about that. But again, we're, staff is allowed to have decisions in the workplace and our district administration allowing us to have some of those conversations as well. And then overall, I'm satisfied with my job in the West Bend School District. Again, combining all those opportunities for feedback is going to engage more and more. Okay? And then safe and secure. Again, we are going to be working on our students not engaging in negative responses to situations, making poor decisions at school. And so that's why we are, we have deployed a student survey because our goal is to move from 94% of our students receiving zero or one office referrals. We are moving towards 97% of that. And so what we truly believe at McLean is that if our students feel engaged, if they feel as though they have an adult that they can count on, that they can go to, they will be able to manage the anxiety and the stresses that school can bring. And so at the current time, September, October, it's a victory. We are hitting our benchmark right now. So 97 of our, 97% of our students have zero or one office discipline referrals. More importantly, because of our student survey, we are, we are confident because our students are saying 100% of our students feel as though they are connected to at least one adult in our building. That's not good enough for us because we need to ensure that that lasts. So not only did we deploy that in October, we're also going to deploy that in April. Why April? Why not at the end of the year? Because April, we want to make sure that the students that we have at McLean are feeling connected all the way through the year. If for some reason they feel differently in April, all right, we can then hit that back and connect with those students again so they can finish out the year well and look forward to next year knowing that those individuals will be there. And then at McLean, it is all about making Salto Wisconsins, getting dressed up to go on field trips and just enjoy the beautiful weather and our classroom, Mr. Bones up in third grade. Okay? I thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I just make one comment from the presentations over the years, just Jackson and McLean has shined as far as leadership, staff, students and parent involvement. I've seen your parent organizations at both schools, visited both schools and it's loved to see the energy and the new ideas trying. So I'm just commending you on your leadership at those schools and just the parents and kids and again, teachers' involvement. Thank you.
I'm just going to chime in if there are no more questions.
Of course.
I'm here because of staff. All right? This stuff doesn't occur, all right, if it's not for the staff, if it's not for a supportive school board, if it's not for a supportive superintendent and other administrative individuals. And so when people ask me how long I've been in West Bend, I tell them and they're like, oh my gosh, that's fantastic. And what I also tell them is that both my kids went through here and if I'm privileged that my staff invites me back every year. And I don't say that lightly, I say that to them, I say that to all of you and I say that to the people watching. So I appreciate the opportunity to continue to shine. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just say, sorry, just generally to you and to Darcy as well, thank you for your presentations because I think they allow the board to stay a lot more connected to our individual schools because it's great to hear about what are your focus areas, what's your thought process behind it and what's your progress? And so we appreciate that information very much. Thank you.
I said one quick thing. So I'm just looking at like the literacy numbers and stuff like that and you see the 48% and you're hoping to raise it to 53 and so on and so forth. Is that, so I'm assuming with those kind of numbers and it's both, I think it's every school, you know, is you can't get 100%, you know, proficiencies, but I'm assuming there's some kind of intervention that kids are having. And I guess my question is, do you have enough people to do those interventions? Do you need volunteers? How can we get the community to get involved with intervention, stuff like that?
That's a really outstanding question because I do have it on my notes here. Okay? And early intervention is key. And when I see early intervention, that is kindergarten, first, second grade because then we see our scores rise. And so at this point in time, we have all of our reading interventionists pushing into our kindergarten classrooms in order to support those needs. Do we have enough people? Do we have enough human capacity? I think there is always room to have more human capacity, but we also know that money is an object. Okay? And so when we talk about volunteers, volunteers to read with kids, sure, all right? But when we talk about instruction, it is all those building blocks. So we could have volunteers to come in and read with kids, but I would highly encourage parents and grandparents to read with kids at home because by the time the kids are knee-deep in literacy and math and science and everything like that at school, they're kind of wore out. All right? And so if there is one thing that I would really highly recommend is as many people that we can get at home can be engaged with kids, and I will speak for every building in this district, is that all you need to do is call the teacher. Ask them if they have books to bring home, what kind of books. Those are the resources that we can provide, absolutely 100%. And then you will see those scores rise.
All right. Other questions, thoughts? Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, under reports, our next item is the Curriculum Committee Report and Ms. Melanie Arigot, our chair, will give us an update. Good evening.
Good evening. All right. So the Curriculum Committee met on October 18th. Dr. Reese presented the Fall STAR data, which will be brought to the full board for discussion on November 14th. The STAR assessment is a nationally normed test that is given to K through 10 students three times per year. And these assessments allow the district to analyze the individual student results and collective district results. Dr. Reese also shared the background information of curriculum cycles. So the Curriculum Committee would understand the process of program analysis. The draft of the next few years showed the programs that would be going through the program analysis process. And Mr. Harder presented the early college credit, yeah, the early college credit and Start College Now Spring Student Course Requests that were on the consent agenda for today's board meeting. And these are brought forth to the board each fall and spring for consent in that same manner.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from Melanie? Appreciate your update. Thanks. All right. We are then on to, let's see, Curriculum Committee. Oh, we're on to action items then. The first two action items, I believe Mr. Tim Harder is going to walk us through that, Director of Technology. And correct me if I'm wrong, but these first two items are ones that we've seen before.
You are correct.
The first one is a tech-
Yep. We did this two weeks ago. The first item on there is asking for your approval for an update to our graphic design textbooks for three different courses that we offer at the high school as part of our graphic design program of study. The updated textbooks allow us to stay in compliant with the technical college credit that we offer here at our high school campus through Moraine Park Technical College.
Great. Any questions on this, on this item?
Motion to approve textbook updates for graphic design courses as presented.
Thank you Nancy and Joel for the motion. Motion to approve the textbook updates for the graphic design courses as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then the next is education program of study updates.
So two weeks ago, we had presented to you a recommended update to our program of study and our education pathway. The current pathway is predominantly built around childcare, so birth to 4K-ish, 5K-ish at that point in time. So as the team reviewed our internal data, student information, what other school districts are doing and the workforce data, we came up with a pathway that allows us to serve both childcare and early childhood along with K-12 education with a caveat that students could also take courses around special education in K-12. So the presentation encompasses with a new pathway that has a childcare pathway, a K-12 general education pathway with credits offered through UW Oshkosh, so students could earn six college credits and two courses there. And then a special education pathway through UW Whitewater where students could earn six college credits there. The special ed pathway would start off as a virtual pathway for our students who are interested in that. If we had enough enrollment numbers, we would work with Mr. Lenny Hansen and with Mrs. Emily Maelstrand to look at bringing that house with a certified special education teacher who would meet the requirements for higher ed at that point in time. So it would expand an opportunity for our students into that K-12 education aspect piece. And then all of that would encompass with a work-based learning experience at the end, similar to other co-ops and youth apprenticeship opportunities for our students.
Thank you. Any questions or recommended action on this item? I had moved to approve the education program of study updates and curricular resources as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that John?
I think it was like 12 of us.
It was like 12 of us. We'll give that one to John. Thank you. Motion and second to approve the education program of study updates and curricular resources. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That motion carries as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll invite Mr. Andy Sarno to the podium here, our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations for the next few items. Our next action item is final budget recommendation and certification of tax levy. Mr. Sarno, good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. In my board information, I talk about the culmination, this is over almost 12 full months from the point that we projected what the deficit was that we were working with until this evening when the board takes formal action, taking into consideration the annual meeting, important steps along the way. We have a very detailed calendar of events from looking at staffing and making sure we're engaging stakeholders. So just a brief piece of information, I will go over this just in a moment. This document is very similar to what was published in the newspaper. It takes the audited 2020, 2021 information, last year's unaudited, even though we're in very good shape with that audit and I can't call it because I don't have the audit in my hand, but last year's revenues and expenditures and then the final recommended budget at this point in time. But just really briefly, because we've talked about what happens between September 26th and now at that annual meeting, annual budget hearing until now, we wait for the Department of Revenue for final information from them, the Department of Public Instruction with final state aids, other pieces of information. So I just wanted to share a little bit of what was going on over the last couple of months. And keeping in mind that that annual meeting and budget hearing, because of the newspaper publication requirements of that, that's actually really closer to call it September 1st information because of the timeline leading into that. So over the last 70 weeks, there has been a fair amount of information, but that's now finalized, but very minimal. As I was working with a couple of internal team members today, all the variances are well under 1% quite frequently. You know, there might be a three tenths of a penny change from different pieces and whatnot. So really to document that change from September until now, want to share that information. And then we do have a recommended, recommended motion leading into the information that's current contained in the information that we've shared. September until October, property values. We estimated, and our district has been growing, this year it was estimated to be at about 13.18% or $6.81 billion, increasing by just under $1 billion, 846 million. Actually, it was just shy of that. And again, that net impact is three, three hundredths of a penny on the mill rate, but again, because less, less property value means that a little bit more of a mill rate calculation is the denominator in there. Membership, originally we estimated that there's going to be 5,975 FTE or 130 student decrease from last year to this year. And that's who we get to count, not necessarily the students that are in our halls, but who we get to count who reside within our geography. The actual was 5,906. It was 199 less students compared to last year, but that revenue limit, because it's actually fewer students coincidentally through the formula, we got an additional $200,000 within our revenue limit. So that was built in. Some of that was funded through the state. I'll talk about that next. But the big piece to consider on this, and where we did have more summer school students, it was offset by that just a little bit. The interesting piece though is that next year, because we get to keep declining enrollment, we get to keep some extra dollars for one extra year because we have declining enrollment. So a big piece of that though is that but, I mean that, and we need to be mindful of this, you're going to see that we're going to start next year's budget process very soon. There's two different enrollment exemption, enrollment exemptions that we get to keep this year. Because there were fewer students, the state increases those, meaning that next year they go away. Those actually increased by $200,000 each, totaling $400,000 for next year. That will be a revenue limit decrease next year. So just a little bit of some foreshadowing. That's exactly. Thank you, Superintendent Wimmer. Private school vouchers. And we've seen these grow and these students, when this started now, it was open kindergarten through 12, six years ago, and there was families that jumped in at that point. Now what we're seeing a lot more, and we don't, we still don't know who these students are. We don't receive any lists from the Department of Public Instruction, but now it's really those students that are part of that and then new kindergartners is that matriculates through, all the way through 12th grade over the next several years. But originally we estimated, I estimated a 25% increase, thinking that we'd have that covered at $3.4 million. The actual was $3.65 million. So that's money that we don't actually see. It's recorded as revenue and expenditure, but we never see the money. That money goes straight from the state to those participating schools, but it's something that we levy for. So it translates to 54 cents on the levy. It's already $100,000 of home value. It's $54 that the district levies on behalf of those students and families who qualify. Defees debt unchanged from September. That was something, and we're debt-free in 2023. It's anticipated to be the last levy, borrowing some change in interest rates that we've estimated and calculated foreshadowing out a couple of years, but that's the last levy. We still have payments for another three years, but this is the last levy that we anticipate both for that 2009 and 2000 referendum. Pretty, pretty amazing work that we're, the district in general, school board, current and past, administration that we're able to refinance, we're able to defees and we're able to sunset those and retire those debts here in the very near future. So something certainly to celebrate that we've spoken about multiple times. State aid, estimated $30.5 million. That increased by about $150,000 again because of where other schools across the state ended up last year's spending. There's a three-tiered formula. I'd love to bend your ear for about two or three hours, but there's a three-tiered formula that goes into calculating that. Districts, some districts underspent last year, therefore making more money available to districts across the state. So an additional $146,000. We will be reducing the levy and using a little bit less escor dollars because of that. Originally back in September, we estimated a mill rate of $6.29 per thousand dollars of assessed value because of the other influencing variables between the additional revenue limit authority, the different state aid and for that matter, the vouchers, that now final cut- That now, final calculation is at $8.34 per thousand dollars. So it went up by five cents. Esser use, originally back in September, we estimated $6.45 million. We've reduced that now down to 6.1. Keeping in mind, there was not an increase in the revenue limit last year or this year. We're living on those one-time dollars, but reduced that down from the September estimate. Have final information on benefits of new hires. We've made adjustments in departmental budgets, so we're able to capture an additional $350,000. As is always the case, and we know that we have a budget deficit, a projected anticipated deficit for next year that we will address, but as always, what's being presented to use a balanced budget at this point in time. 2023, 2024, we're foreshadowing, that was a great word. We're, we're coming off of a 4.7% consumer price index. That's our, our ability to negotiate with our staff. But we're estimating an 8% plus consumer price index for this next year. That's been monitored very closely. We have a remaining $976,000 of Esser $3 that can be used. We've spoken about that over the last couple of board meetings, making sure that we're trying to land into the next fiscal year. But that state budget is yet to be determined. So the next biennial budget, we have proposals from State Superintendent Underly. But we know that there's a heated governor's race that we need to monitor and how that might impact future years' funding. But we know that we have just under a million dollars of Esser $3 to use. We have continued declining enrollment. And as I'd mentioned earlier, a couple slides ago, right off the bat, I know next year, because of declining enrollment, there's two exemptions that total $3.2 million. That includes that additional $400,000, but we need to be mindful of that. We've right-sized the district. We've used those terms in the past. We make sure that our staffing levels are appropriate with our class sizes and grade levels, but we, we need to reflect that in next year's budget projections. And with the budget projections over the last couple of years, we've used a Baird Forecast Model. It's probably one of the most elaborate spreadsheets. We've used that. In fact, that was one of the complements of S and P when we had that debt rating call related to refinancing. That's something that we utilize. We need to make that more accessible between human resources. And we even gave a teaser to all the full leadership last week about what this information means in projecting next year's budget. Because this, this will probably want to be one of the most difficult budgets that we've seen. I reflect back to Act 10, which was now at least 10 years ago. We were given tools at that point in time to balance the budget, but yet at the same time, from an emotional standpoint, this is now going to be a very difficult budget that we need to be, is, is open, transparent, creative with as possible. Be happy to go over the final budget, which was included in the packet. This is now all final, final information from September. That, that was comprehensive at that point in time. I've spent the last month completely rebuilding the budget, making sure that we have everything captured. But the budget that was attached, both revenues, expenditures, revenues in green, expenditures in that kind of salmon color. We have beginning and ending fund balances reflected in yellow. Again, a balanced budget. We do have that slight surplus where we're defeesing debt for future use with debt repayments. I'd be happy to go over that if you'd like me to. We have a motion, a recommended motion based on the current information that's being presented.
Yeah, I'd like to make a, a motion with amendment. I'll make a motion to approve the proposed final budget, including an amount not to exceed $200,000 for additional school liaison officers resulting in a levy property taxed, taxes in the amount of $43,381,040 for a mill rate of $6.37 per 1,000 of assessed value on average across all municipalities and parcels.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve the final budget, just so I make sure this is right, including an amount not to exceed $200,000 for additional school liaison officers. This would result in a, resulting in a levy of property taxes in the amount of 43, $43,381,040 for a mill rate of $6.37 per 1,000 of assessed value on average across all municipalities and parcels. Just want to be sure we're on the same page.
We have that written.
You have it written? Okay. Great. Let's pause for a second while we put that up.
Presentation in there? Do you want to grab it from there? Or right from Andy's file?
All of a sudden, I'm the old guy that doesn't operate technology.
Okay, so.
We're getting together, we're able to get that language written down. So you can see that, that it was a couple cents, it was three cents total, Andy difference.
Correct.
For taxpayers and that. And again, we'll put that language right in front of you so that you can see it and capture it.
Sure.
And public can see it as well. It was in the final presentation.
There we go. Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and second on the floor, so we'll pause for discussion. Any discussion, questions? Nancy?
Couple of questions, and I'm totally putting you on the spot. I'm assuming you have a calculator handy. So if the home value is $350,000 of my home, what did I pay last year?
I, I would want to pull out my calculator. So $7.97 multiplied by 350.
I knew you had a calculator somewhere, especially in your pocket.
I got, I got one here, yeah.
As an accountant, I'd be embarrassed if you didn't have one in your pocket right now.
$350,000 house, so it's, this is the, the mill rate is per thousand. So we will say 350 multiplied by 7.97, which was the mill rate last year. So school district portion of the taxes, no other municipalities, tech colleges, anything, district portion last year was $2,789.
Okay, and before.
Remember that, please.
I got it. Somebody's got that written down. I'm checking your math.
Okay. Thank you.
And with the original motion, with the original amount minus the additional three cents, please tell us what that same amount would be for this year, the school district portion?
It's a little bit, $6.34.
Around $9.
Multiplied by 350. It's $2,009, uh, $2,219.
And now the new amount, please, just for those watching at home that are trying to do the math.
$2,229. So I believe it's $10.50 difference.
I just wanted you to announce it to everyone. I, I really didn't have a point. I just wanted everyone to know the numbers, so.
I think it's good to reiterate to understand what it means for people personally as well. And I think the, the greater context to people understanding the difference between last year's at 2,700 and delivering savings to the taxpayers at 2,200, you know, this difference of $10 for this adjustment is, like you said, it's, it's not a large impact.
And then I guess this is more to Mr. Donaldson. So obviously you're looking for liaison officers. I'm assuming that you're going to have the chief and superintendent work out where those liaison officers are located or where they feel they need the most help. And I assume that'll be discussed more in our work study.
Yeah, I'm not dictating where those.
So just making sure, just making sure.
That's okay. What we'll do is we'll talk about that, given that amendment this evening and shift. We have, Chief and I have talked about and foreshadowed what would an expansion look like. So we'll talk through those pieces. We'll talk about that. And then that would require an expansion or shift in the MOU. So that comes back to the board for approval through, through that difference as well. So just so you'll see it as we plan it and what that could look like. And then you'll have to formally approve that expenditure through that process too.
So one last question. $200,000 seems like an arbitrary number. I'm assuming that you did some math or something to come up with that. Are we sure that's enough?
So currently, I did speak with Mr. Sarno. And I think our liaison officers right now are around 181. So this should more than, this should hopefully double what we have.
So that does, and the current MOU is at, at certain rates, so we're getting veteran officers. There's just some nuances for the chief and I to work out in the current MOU language. So we can figure that out and, and come up with a plan.
I mean, we're talking about a very small amount. We're talking about people actually saving money. So that's my question. If you're going to say 200,000, why not 500,000?
I think that's your motion to make then.
I didn't make the motion. I'm asking you. I mean, you came up with 200. So I, I mean, this, maybe we put the cart before the horse because obviously that was my question before. What's, what's the dream number? What, what, what is the most that we can do to keep our students safe? I, I understand you can't put a price on safety, so let me be very clear about that. But I mean, if we're looking at this and the concern is school safety, obviously I'm a huge proponent of school safety, so why not 500,000 then if we're still saving money from the prior year, correct? I'm certainly not a CPA like either one of you guys, but you know, we're still saving money, so why, why not put $500,000 into it?
I was gonna say, well, go ahead Superintendent.
I think, I think the chief's wheels are turning as are mine. So for us to put $500,000 and expect that transformation within the budgetary year would be really hard to pull off. Taking a first step forward, I think is a right step forward. And then if we look at future, again, we're going to start next year's budget planning next month already, and we can do that. But again, if we were all of a sudden to throw a half million dollars and try and fully staff, do all that in this and expend all that by our calendar fiscal year at June 30th, we might run into some concerns there. So that would be one of my pieces of, I want to actualize what we have. I think with that said, we can look at and dig in. Dave Ross will be back from Buildings and Grounds starting next month. We are doing some updates from our last board work session on those pieces. And we talked about presenting the safety pieces separately. And then there might be additional dollars outside of the community ones that the board's going to shift or prioritize around safety pieces. So there's still opportunity in the current budget to attend to some of those pieces as well.
So I'll say this, obviously we're in a unique situation this year, right? We have the ability, we're saving the tax dollars, taxpayers some money this year, okay, over, over last year. You've just told us that next year's budget will be much worse. Inflation is going up. We are going to have to deal with that. Why wouldn't we try and take advantage of a year like this to put some things into place? I don't know all the legalities of that, but if we have things in place for security and safety, do we have to expend it all in this year? Or could it be a two-part, like, hey, we're buying X, Y, and Z? I have no idea. I don't know. Chief is looking at me like, what are you doing Nancy? But you know, if we're buying X, Y, and Z this year, but we're not going to realize it until the next year. I guess I'm just saying, we have a very unique opportunity afforded to us right now. So if we're going to make a difference, then why wouldn't we do it when we have the funds versus trying to pinch ourselves next year when we know we've got a lot of other, lack of better words, fish to fry?
Wonderful question, and that's something that we have spoken about in past years. Fund 80 is outside of the revenue limits. And so currently our school liaison officers, the $185,000 is funded through Fund 80. They present, and that's something that's disclosed at the annual meeting, all of the programs and services and dollar amounts within Fund 80 at the annual, annual meeting, annual budget hearing. So we disclose all that information. That's outside of the revenue limit, which is why we have the board, excuse me, not, not me or we, you have the authority to enter into a levy for those allowable purposes. We can't say those textbooks or those learning materials that were just approved, let's take those out of Fund 80. That's within our general fund with revenue limit constraints. And so the, as a, as a part of the recommended amendment to tonight's budget, that additional $200,000 would be an additional levy out of Fund 80. So that.
And that's where we can take it. That's, that's where we can take it from without an impact as such, but it also has a lot of rules around it that we have to follow. So pushing forward a whole bunch of additional safety pieces, they're not going to qualify for that. So this is, this is going to meet the test of the auditors of the state and take a step forward for us. You can still look at next year's because again, barring that, you, we still have a, we're projecting a, a future reduction, not just in our revenues, but you know, it, it will continue to look at our, our mill rate and those pieces. So I think we might be in that same position to capture out of Fund 80 in the future.
Exactly, yeah. And maybe a perfect illustration for this, I actually, and this is that budget informational piece that I'd referenced earlier. We have revenues and expenditures, yellow and orange, beginning and ending fund balance in yellow. This is Fund 80, and even going back to 2020, 2021, that beginning fund balance was at $158,000. Prior to that, in 2018, 19, it was even larger. We acknowledge that we, we continued to levy dollars and not expense the whole amount. And so strategically, very purposefully, we said, well, let's come up with a three-to-four year spend down. So our expenditures have been going up a little bit. We've not been quite levying that full amount. And over the course of that period of time, I'm projecting that if we spend everything that's been budgeted for the current year, we'll have an ending fund balance of $33,000. Fund 80 is one of those weird ones that you can actually go into the negative. I don't like to, but you can go into the negative and make up for that levy next year. Likewise, if you had X amount of dollars for, in revenues, whether it was fees that were collected for middle school sports or the levy, you, and you didn't spend it all, you can have fund balance. You have to have a reason for that. There would be a purpose. So just in this illustration alone, we've been purposefully using the fund balance because it was there without a purpose. We've assigned it a purpose, and, and we're getting to the point where that's a very comfortable levy, uh, mill rate, excuse me, at that $33,000. It'd be even better if we were closer to zero. So we could, by all means, and this was the other discussion that we had prior to the meeting, we could levy that additional $200 as is presented in the amended motion, levy that, those dollars, pretend that there weren't police officers that became available for, to fill the, the position. That, that unspent money would end up resulting in a, a fund balance at year end that could be, then be used for additional future years by, by under levying to offset that.
So what you're saying is my 500,000 that I just suggested, if we only spend 250 of it this year, could go to next year for that same fund to continue moving forward with safety. So what's the appropriate dollar amount that gives us some cushion that doesn't, listen, I've been through plenty of audits myself. They're not fun. I understand that. I don't want to get us into trouble, but I also am sick and tired of cutting us short all the time. So can we, can I make a friendly amendment to Mr. Donaldson's amendment and say 300,000 instead of 200?
So I, I believe that that might be for discussion. So again, the current four SLOs that participate in the school district, that's a contract of $185,000. I don't, I don't have the context of the agreement that if we doubled that and received eight, would it be an additional $185,000? Or are there other expenditures related to that? So I think we.
We're talking about someone else's staff.
Yeah, for sure. I would love to hear what the chief has to say.
We've got, we've got an amendment on, on the floor, and we're in the discussion phase.
Sure.
Just speaking with the chief, because we've talked about some preliminary things, but this is his staffing, and we're not paying the full cost of everything.
Not even close.
This is a shared piece. Yeah, this is a shared piece that we enter into jointly so that our taxpayers, you know, they're seeing, we're not double charging our taxpayers. We're each kind of giving at the altar to make sure our students, our community are safe. So I'd just invite him to speak about as we're banding around a month.
No, thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity. Just, I appreciate the commitment to safety, and thank you for that. Our strategy at the police department over the last year has been to be measured and strategic. So I'm, a little bit of a pause now, because I will say, the 185 pays for 50% of the four officers' base salary. So 50% of their base salary, doesn't include overtime, doesn't include the cost of an additional squad card, doesn't include the cost of training, which in our MOU, we, we agreed to fund. So committing to an additional staff has an additional cost to our department and the budget and our taxpayers. My job as the police chief is to make sure that I am a steward of the taxpayers' money as well as providing for that safety. He gave you some of those numbers of the school liaison officers in area jurisdictions to say that I believe when I benchmark it out that we're on par. Great questions for our work session of what's, if money isn't an issue, what would we do? But money is always an issue. And so we'll talk about those dreams then. So what is the appropriate number? $2 million, $5 million, 200, half a million? I don't know. I really don't know. I know that our bare minimum of holding school liaisons right now is four, or we wouldn't be at, you know, we'd be at five if it was. I'd say that's the bare minimum. There's dreams, those things. But everything that we're talking about, there's exponential dynamics involved, right? That staffing, another school liaison officer, it now takes us an officer off the road to commit to the schools, which we're more than willing to do if we can fill that road position. You've heard Nutsch talk about staffing levels with the county referendum, I'm sure evolved and following that. And West Bend is no different. We're at the same amount of, we have one additional officer from when I was hired in 1995. We're feeling that strain. Our officer's around 12 hours of overtime. I'm not saying this to make excuses. I'm saying it to fill us in on additional dynamics to just say, let's add two more officers. Sounds fantastic, but it needs to be measured and strategic to look at it. So I don't have a dollar amount for. So I don't have a dollar amount for any of that. I appreciate the commitment to it. We'll certainly look at it. One of the things we've discussed is Silverbrook and our elementary schools, making sure that we have an officer committed to that would be something just without violating my own strategic and measured approach, saying that would be my gut would be where we would look to land someone. We run a program now where our officers are each assigned to school, our patrol officers, so we're having that presence. I can't speak for Ryan, Chief Asquith, but I'm sure he has some ideas as well. And let's not forget, Jackson is part of our district as well towards that, so.
I think it was just important for us to show that the price that we're paying is a shared cost. So it didn't mean exactly. Chief has his own budget and own people who need to approve that. So for us to approve one piece of that and think it's getting us something versus what it can really buy if we assume the whole cost, we just want to be very transparent about that.
And I think that was kind of my point. There could be a time in the very near future where the chief has to come back to us and say, guess what? 50% doesn't cut it any longer because of X, Y, and Z. And so my point is, in a year where we can afford to do it, what can we do on the front end to help us in a year that potentially next year, we can't? That's, I'm putting that out there for the board to think about. I mean, this is no different than, you know, my constant berating us about our buildings. You know, in our own lives, we set aside for things like roof repairs and those kind of things because we can, right? This is a way for a change in my six times on the board here now, listening to the budget, that we can actually do something to make a change that there's clearly citizen concern about, as well as all of our concern, right? Safety is number one's concern. But this is also setting us potentially ahead for the future, for next year, when next year, we might not be able to do this. We might be sitting here biting our fingernails going, how are we even going to pay for what we have without anything extra? So I just, I put it out there for consideration and commentary because I think this is a different scenario than we've ever had presented in the past. I don't believe we've had this where we have decreased what the taxpayers are paying in my six years. Maybe once, or like by pennies, correct, yeah.
I think it's just important that, as you're saying with that, we're going to have to look at something different. While the current MOU, as Chief said, is covering about 50%, he's not going to have capacity in his budget. We're going to have to look at different funding, different pieces to support that, to make that happen. So you know, as you said, I think it's up to the board right now, what steps do you want to take? Andy, you want to run some more numbers? If anyone would like us to look at that, we can do that. But again, now is that time because you're going to be up against a deadline for us to be voting on this budget and filing all the things that we need to do, so.
Well, maybe if I understand Nancy V. and Andy V., the challenge we have with school finances the way they are is as it relates to if we were looking for better doors or metal detectors, and these are random examples, we can't take that out of Fund 80, is that correct?
That is correct, the discussions that we've had, so I think the board took action on August 22nd, August 2nd, second meeting in August for $200,000 for additional door and camera. That was Fund 41. So again, that facilities capital improvement fund that can be utilized for such, but not under Fund 80, correct?
Right, and as it relates to how the levy and how this proposed levy works, we're kind of tapped out on our ability to raise a levy for that fund.
How I phrase it is the revenue limit, what's being presented tonight is to the maximum allowable authority. So if you said, get another dollar in the general fund, I'd say I can't because we don't have that authority. I file my paperwork tomorrow with the Department of Public Instruction and two hours later, they give me a call and say, Andy, you're a dollar over, literally.
Yeah, but Fund 80, we have this flexibility.
We have flexibility.
So if I understand, Nancy, if I understand your point correctly, it is, and maybe this is the question. Let's say, let's say we put $300,000 or $500,000 in there, but we don't spend it all. If all of a sudden we realize, oh my gosh, you know what, this isn't going to work, it doesn't work in conjunction with the city, does it penalize us if we roll over, I realize we want to be stewards of the taxpayer dollars? Otherwise, we could put a million in there, we could put 10 million in there, and we don't want to do that either. But are there penalties if we overshoot this?
No penalties, these dollars are siloed within this fund and they have to remain in that fund for allowable purposes. So at some point in time, if that fund balance at year's end, because we didn't spend it all, grew, we would just, I would just hope, and I would be a part of the plan in order to spend those dollars down to a point where we are right now, closer to zero. And that is by all means certainly a possibility. So it really comes down to not even understand, not even making the decision of, it's more, what does that future levy and that future mill rate look like? As opposed to since this is outside of the revenue limit, the funds are segregated too much to help out in a different area. But it can help out in a future year, lobby and all, by all means.
John?
I just have a kind of a two-part question.
Go ahead, John.
Are we able to commit to, so maybe this won't double our liaison officers, but if, can we commit to paying the full salaries for them in the time being until the other, you know, chief can figure out the other side of, you know, if we're going to keep the same agreement? And if we can, will you be able to even find the staff for it then?
So I think that was what we were talking about, you know, we were just, you know, whispering on the side because we're doing a little side planning. But almost a two-tiered MOU, we currently have one that's kind of shared funding. He's, you know, too far gone in his own budget. I said, this is going to be, this is us having to pick up 100% cost and flow through there and do that. I don't have an answer because I certainly can't buy a new police car out of this fund. But I could look at some pieces, and it might be us having to go back to the original MOU to look at some of the terms. And maybe it's time to look at that piece where it's 50/50 even. So I think it's open as we bring it forward, how we structure it or even restructure.
So really, go ahead, Chief, go ahead.
Your second point, would we be able to find the staff? We're in a constant hiring process. We're three officers down right now, we have, we're on our fourth hiring process for the year. But yes, we always still get very qualified, dedicated young people who want to serve their community. It's a little longer than it used to in the past, but we're still finding fantastic candidates.
Cool. I have a question about Fund 80. Looks like you've got about $250,000 more of expenditures for this year anyway. Where is that money being spent?
We had a new position that was added this year, a community liaison that works with businesses and industries in the area. We expanded a little bit of our after-school programming to Silverbrook's, more similar to what Badger does with their athletics. So that was expanded at Silverbrook. We have the one security piece, again, for our outside of school hours. There was an additional $30,000 that was budgeted, potentially to monitor doors, give access to buildings. So that's a perfect example is, we might need this, that's been included. We haven't begun it yet, even though, and we're a quarter of the year, both fiscal as well as almost a quarter of the way through the school year. But that was something that was included in the levy. We may not spend that and that may end up adding to fund balance next year. So those are the three main areas that we added to increase Fund 80 this past, from last year to this year.
Thank you.
So it seemed to me there are kind of two decisions here. One is, how much money would we want to set aside in this account, knowing that it's restricted, right? If it's in there, there are only certain things we can spend it on. Then there's a second decision to come in the future as to now, how can we legally and effectively spend it? And so I appreciate the idea of adding a bit of additional cushion for some flexibility. I just want to be sure we're not sending the signal that, all right, you have to find a way to spend every single penny of it immediately. We have to, I think that's what the work session is for, to identify what is it that we're looking for, so.
For me, we are putting the cart before the horse here. I mean, adding $200,000 and assuming that we're going to go from four to eight officers, that, we don't know if that's the case or not. I also am 100% not in favor of fully funding the police officers in our building. Our police officers, our police department has a duty and obligation to protect the citizens of this community, no matter where they are. In a town of 32,000 people, if 2,000 people gather every day in a location, the police should be there to protect those people, and that happens every day at our high school, for instance. So you know, you're taking tax dollars from a school district, now using it to fund a city department. To fully fund that, that doesn't make any sense to me. So I am all in favor of the school liaison program. I was part of the negotiations when we went from two officers to three officers. And I don't think we paid any more at that time. I think we were spending about 100, maybe 120,000. And then Chief Moeller said, we need to add a fourth officer, and we do need to increase that dollar amount a little bit. And it was a negotiation on, okay, what shift is that fourth officer going to work? And the officers that are assigned to Badger and Silverbrook, are they going to make visits into the elementary schools? What does it look like? To budget $200,000, without going through that discussion right now, it's just putting the cart before the horse. And I don't think that it's setting an expectation of, there's no, I have no clear expectation of what this is going to look like. Chief could be looking his lips back there thinking, oh, good, now that 50% just went up to 100%. And four is the number, you're not going to get any more. So I think we need to have a negotiation, a discussion with our police department on what it looks like. When can you ramp up and get more officers in the buildings? It sounds like it's probably not going to be this school year if he's already three officers down on the road. So it's just, I've negotiated this MOU in the past, being a board president. And this isn't how it works. This isn't how, this isn't how this goes down. So I'm not in favor of this.
So here, that what you're saying is we have to start by identifying what's the need, the cost, and the structure before, okay? Other thoughts?
Kurt? Yeah, I'm just going to take the tax perspective. I'll just say upfront, I'm a big security proponent. I think we should have more resources in our offer, in our school buildings. And I think we should use more of the Esser funds for security, I think there's money in there. I'd like to celebrate a 250 to 750 tax deduction, 20% tax reduction for our homeowners in the community. Now, I don't think the city assessor's not here, but if I'm doing my math right, Andy, again, $7.97 down to $6.34 is a $1.63. Roughly on a $200,000 home, you're talking about $250, all the way up to maybe 750 on a $400,000 home. If I did my math right.
I think the thing to keep in mind is that our property values grew by 15%. So where our mill rate was decreased by 20%, 25%, taxes are still going down. And this is where, back in September, I was a little bit hesitant because I knew that final numbers were going to be coming in. I didn't know exactly where they were, I knew that there was going to be a little fluctuation in the mill rate. You know, I like to overpromise, wait, I like to under, over, yeah, underpromise and overdeliver. We went a nickel sideways this year because of some other contributing factors. But keep in mind that that $220,000 house might be a $250,000 house now. But yet, at the same time, the taxes grew by 15% on average across all property types, all parcels. So the property value on average grew by 15%. It wasn't just all new construction, but the mill rate did drop. So we can guarantee that people's property tax bills when they arrive in the very near future are going to go down for the school district's portion. But it's dependent on what happened.
Depending on your property, whether, it might increase by 10%, but probably, okay. So at least we're revising that, maybe from $100 to $600, depending on your property value at home. Anyway, get to the point, Kurt. So I think we should celebrate in that. I've been asked as a board member for all the years to be more financially conscious and debt-conscious and pay our debts off. So maybe my second question is, within the $6.34, we're still making the final payment on roughly $8 million?
Still, $8 million of outstanding?
Well, $8 million total of interest and the final principal.
I would want to verify that, the outstanding out. It was all disclosed, I've been sleeping with this document for those of you that were at the annual meeting. We have a wonderful golfer on the front, it discloses all that. So I can flip to it real quick because I know exactly where it's at. We still have principal outstanding of $10,310,000, principal outstanding of $861,000. We are making payments this year of about $3.5 million, but we've defused a little bit extra, so we're done with that. But we're levying $6,070,000 this year.
So $6 million is a non-no.
In the current years, yep.
So I think we have a unique chance come April to go to the community because I think we're going to need more for security and our buildings while taking care of our in-house other expenses. I do think because the $6 million is coming off next year's levy, yes, it's going to be financially challenging, but whoever, I think we were surprised this year on how much the state kicked in over. So this is what decisions we got to make when we're voting on these things. I would rather go to the community after the security session and a facility session and then ask for what we need and see if they're in favor. Because I think they'll see a tax deduction this year. And then they'll see, hey, there's going to be another tax deduction. Or we could use this for X, Y, and Z. That would improve community safety, improve the learning environments of our students and fun things. So I'm still a big proponent of school safety, but I'm hedging towards just going with their original assessment and would make a motion, but there's a motion on the floor, so I'm just saying what I'm leaning towards.
Other thoughts?
I look forward to the work session. We're at the 11th hour approving a budget here and to have a budget amendment at the 11th hour for something that we haven't discussed all year, this just does not feel right to me at all. I am, I love our school liaison officers, I do, Chief, I know all four of them well. And they do a great job, and so does the whole department. And I look forward to the continued partnership. But we haven't talked about this at all. We haven't talked about what this looks like and the impact it would have. And I think we're slinging $200,000 at the wall not knowing what it's for. So for those reasons, I'm not in favor of this at all. I look forward to talking about it and planning, and that's how budgets are put together, is through planning.
I think the $200,000 actually opens up a conversation to have and start. And if it's doable this year, then it's doable at a very minimal cost at a year that we're decreasing the mill rate and taxpayers won't really feel it. So I think, I think it's absolutely, it would be, you know, ridiculous not to kind of go with this and get the conversation started and just, you know, have more conversations like the district usually has without action and just let's get things, let's get things moving while we can.
All right, other thoughts? We have a motion?
We have a procedural question to ask.
Sure.
If we vote on this motion and the motion fails, can we still entertain a motion after that to approve?
Absolutely.
Budget, because we can't go, we can't leave tonight without approving a budget.
No, I don't think this first motion is an all or nothing. If this motion were to fail for whatever reason, we can, this topic is on the agenda, so we can make additional motions.
And procedurally, as noted, you have a motion and a second. So if the President would like to call the vote.
Yes, and unless there are objections, I'll do this by roll call votes, we have this for the minute. Are there any?
Mr. Sarnow, can you pop that up so that we can do the language prior to?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
On the screen is the amendment that was cited earlier by Mr. Donaldson.
All right, so this motion is to approve the proposed final budget, including an amount not to exceed of $200,000 for additional school liaison officers, resulting in a levy of property taxes in the amount of $43,381.40 for a mill rate of $6.37 per $1,000 of assessed value on average across all municipalities and parcels. That's the motion. And the second, I will now call the roll, Ms. Ergot.
Yes.
Mr. Repholz.
No.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt is absent. Mr. Donaldson.
Yes.
Mr. Zweigert votes. No, Mr. Angert.
No.
So tally, we have three noes, we have three yeses, because it's a tie, that motion fails.
I move to approve the proposed final budget as presented in a levy of property taxes in the amount of $43,181,40, which results in a mill rate of $6.34 per $1,000 of assessed value on average across all municipalities and parcels in the West Bend School District.
per $1,000 of assessed value. Is that correct? No, I'm sorry?
No.
Oh, that's it. Thank you.
This is it, yep. The $43,181 for a mill rate of $6.34.
All right.
Is that what I said?
Yes. I apologize for my error. I'll read it one more time for the record. Thank you. This is a motion to approve the proposed final budget as presented in levy property taxes in the amount of $43,181,40, which results in a mill rate of $6.34 per $1,000 of assessed value on average across all municipalities and parcels. That's a motion in a second. Discussion.
So, in the work session that we're going to have on, whatever the date is, 22nd, so to my fellow board members, if we determine at that meeting that we need $200,000 for additional officers, what will we do then?
I think that's something we need to work through the district, the police department, on how soon can we, you know, if we, if we need more officers, how soon can we get new officers, more officers? We do have about $40,000 left in the Fund 80 that could at least get us started for the school year. I remember negotiations from the past where we added an officer for a year or two at no additional cost to the district. That happened to be a good negotiation year for the school district, and then a couple of years later, added an officer and increased that dollar amount. So, I guess my point is, it's, that's part of negotiations with, with the police department and the school district on.
Well, I certainly understand what a negotiation is. So, that wasn't my point. My point was, we won't have the dollars to come back to. And you're discussing that you don't, you wanna be a good citizen of the tax dollars, which I agree with. I pay taxes here as well, a, a good penny of them, by the way. So, my point in all this is, it's gotta come out of somewhere. So, you're telling me then you're more comfortable, as you stated, that, you know, that's, that's the job of the police department, but we're still paying it as taxpayers. It doesn't matter whether it's coming out of the city's budget or my budget. We all agree that school safety is important. So, my point is, should we, at that meeting, say we need more officers today, let's just say that the chief comes back and says, yeah, we've got a serious deficit at the high school because of X, Y, and Z. What are you going to say then? Because we can't just pull the money out of the air. What are you gonna cut? That's a very nebulous comment to make to say, well, you know, $40,000. $40,000 is gonna buy three months of a probably salary and full benefits of a police officer. I'm sure that's too high, but, you know, I'm on a roll. So, the point here is, it's going to affect the taxpayers one way or another. You, of all people, should understand how the city budget works, and I know you do. So, that's also being pinched this year. So, I, I don't understand why we wouldn't have looked at this a little harder. And, and perhaps, I agree with you, we are at the 11th hour, so shame on us for not coming forward with this perhaps a little sooner, or, or directing the conversation sooner. But my point is, now we're at a situation where we're having a work session, and if the chief says, yeah, we need more people, or there's, you know, I mean, I don't know, anyone go to the football games this year? We probably could've used a couple more police officers, at least to fend off the concession stand mayhem that was going on. How are we gonna pay for that?
I, I think part of the responsibility of that is the city's. Anytime you gather 5,000 people up at the football stadium, the city, the police department is obligated, they have a duty to be there to protect. I don't, I'm not saying that we should be paying for that.
So, you're telling me that I'm at home and I'm, I'm being robbed in my home, and there's five officers dispatched to the school, and I should be okay with that? That they're not protecting me in my home? They're up at the school dealing with that, and that should be my problem as taxpayer Jane Doe?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that you should hire your own personal police officer either. But, I mean, that's, I, I don't know the ins and outs of how officers are dispatched, but I, I know that, you know, I've been to all the football games, and there's police officers who come and make a presence and sometimes have to leave for other calls. I, I'm not saying I know how police officers are dispatched within the, in the community.
Well, I, I 100% have to disagree with you. In this day and age, when things have changed so dramatically in schools, and we see so much poor behavior by our students, and by many of our adults, I might add, it is absolutely the school district's problem to have to come up with some of the funds to pay for some of that security and safety. That should not be put back on every single citizen in the community to, to afford to pay for that. I mean, I'm sorry, but that, that is part of the school district's situation here. We need to get our own house in order. And then, you know, I agree that it's great that, that we have a memorandum of understanding with the city and that they help us out, but for heaven's sakes, we should be paying for at least 50% of that.
So, back to the question that I'd asked before, if, if we put money into this, into this fund, and let's assume we don't put the restriction necessarily around it that it be spent on liaisons, what are other ways that that money can be spent? My point is, it perhaps reduces some of the risk if the answer is, we, there are, there are many different ways that money, that money effectively can be used, and so the risk of kind of over-assessing the taxpayer is limited. If that makes sense?
It does. So, how I qualify, or how I describe Fund 80, our Community Services Fund, is it's everything outside of a typical school day. So, our school liaison officers are outside of a typical school day. It's during school hours, quite frequently, into the evening when other events are going, but it's outside of what would normally be expected of a, a school day. Similarly, middle school sports, whether it was Badger, Silverbrook, the, the new position that we'd referenced earlier that creates that link that, that we've been talking about as a community for years, between businesses in the school district and creating relationships and fostering employment growth and needs that our businesses are asking for. Those are all things that are within the scope of Fund 80, within the Community Services Fund. By levying dollars, it does not pigeonhole that for school liaison officers in a future year if those dollars were not spent. If they were levied and not spent, as I've mentioned, those dollars go into a fund balance account. They're held there until we have a purposeful deficit where they're used. And so, likewise, and I hope it's okay that I share this, I, I did a few moments ago, this is one of the fund, funds, Fund 80, Community Services Fund, where it's not untypical for it to have a negative fund balance. Not multiple years, you try to make sure that it gets as close to zero as possible. That's what we've been doing with the positive or the surplus fund balance. We've been whittling away at that in a strategic kind of way over multiple years. But there, you know, to answer an earlier question, available dollars could be made that would have to be levied in a future year, which is why the comment earlier that really this comes down to not necessarily the, the next year's budget surplus or deficit. It really comes down to what the tolerance of the school board and the community are for next year's levy and mill rate. So, we have declining enrollment, which means, depending on the state funding, our property value per student could go up, meaning the state would give us less money, meaning it's more of a responsibility on the taxpayers. But this year, there's two contributing factors for the decrease. Number one, the state infused more money. There wasn't an increase in the revenue limit, but they did infuse more funding towards schools, meaning less for the taxpayer. The second piece, I think, is what Mr. Repholz was indicating, is we're, we're done levying for debt. That, that's done. Last year, we levied $8.3 million. This year, it's $6.1 million. That, that contributed to the decrease in the mill rate and the decrease in the levy. So, back, back to Fund 80, I'm gonna loop back around. Dollar, dollars could be available. We could go into the negative with Fund 80. I don't like to do that, but it would be for a purposeful reason that then next year, we would just have to levy additional dollars to make up for that deficit. So, this year, we're at $550,000. We go $60,000 in the hole. We blow through the 33 that's sitting there. We might have to levy $780,000 next year to make up for that deficit that occurred because we were able to find some officers that were qualified and received the training and started providing services to the district, whether it was December, May, whatever that might be.
I, I'm sorry, just one more thing on that. Also, understand that we are about to have a change potentially in, in the governor. We have no idea what the budget will look like in the future. So, to say we're going to have to levy more and the state may pinch us more, that's a very real scary thing, that I don't know that everyone understands quite clearly. So, we have no idea what will happen with the budget. Absolutely no clue. So, to sit here and say, well, I know exactly what's gonna happen, or we're gonna get the same kind of dollars, you are lying to yourselves if you think that, because there is going to be a change one way or another. And it is going to come down to a very frightening time for school districts.
So, I think my position, and I, I appreciate the communication and the dialogue we're having here, my position might be somewhat in, somewhat in the middle, because on the one hand, I agree that this would be an opportunity to put a bit more money into this fund while, at the same time, reflecting an overall net rate decrease for, for our taxpayers. I'm not necessarily a fan on pigeonholing exactly what it's supposed to be spent on until we actually see a plan. And so, my approach may be more, more in the middle, and we have a motion on the floor. But, you know, my thought of, I, I really don't have a problem putting the 200,000, or let's say that's the number, into the account, but without the restriction that it be used necessarily for police officers, because we really shouldn't pigeonhole it there until we know that that's the place we want to spend it and how it would be spent. But I also appreciate the point around, well, you know, we, we owe it to the, we owe it to the taxpayers as, as stewards. So, I think we're, we have, we have kind of three different, three different positions, but kind of close to each other. Other thoughts? We do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, one more question. Procedurally, if this motion fails, then a third motion could be presented, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and this would be for property taxes, $43,181,40, resulting in mill rate $6.34 per $1,000 of assessed value. Any questions on the motion or the second?
I'll just make a comment. I'm gonna be voting in favor of the motion. I, and I do think it's gonna take more money. I would love it if the board doesn't decide to give, whether it's 200,000, 500,000. I do think it'll pass the community, that if we ask the community for more money for security for our schools and some facility work, I think it'll pass. So, that's again why I'm voting for the amendment as proposed right now.
Other thoughts? All right, motion and second. I will call the, I will call the roll. Mr. Donaldson.
No.
Mrs. Zweigert votes no. Mr. Repholz.
Yes.
Ms. Ergot.
No.
Mr. Angert.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt is absent, and Ms. Justman.
No.
That's four no. That motion fails. Can you put the other one back? What I'd like to do is make a motion for the same, but not restricting it for police officers.
Correct. If you give me a minute, I can upload that.
Excellent.
It's just a strike through. I don't know if you have editing rights on your screen. Okay, then I'll, I'll upload it. It's a strike through of the clause following the $200,000, removing four additional school liaison officers. So, it's just showing the inclusion of the $200,000, the same mathematics, but again, not designating it until there's a clear plan and path forward.
So, my motion is to approve the proposed final budget, including an amount not to exceed $200,000 to go, we would say to go to?
Community services.
Community services account.
Second.
Motion and second, proposed final budget for not to exceed $200,000 for community service. This would result in property taxes in the amount of $43,381,40 for a mill rate of $6.37 per $1,000 of assessed value on average across all municipalities and parcels. Is that correct? Mr. Donaldson, discussion.
Are we just gonna make sure that it goes to security, correct?
I don't think we pigeonhole it at all at this point, because we just haven't seen a plan. It would be available for security, is my point.
But I don't want it to get used for something else as the thing. I, I think the whole, the...
What, what my intent, what my role is, is the WUFAR, Wisconsin Financial, Uniform Financial Accounting Requirements, their chart of accounts. So, there's a bunch of strands of numbers. You see some of it between the general fund and Fund 10, Fund 27, Fund 80. That's one of the segments. So, what I'd be more than happy to do upon approval of the board is to make sure, because there's already one line item that's classified, the who, what, where, and why is a payment to the city for the school liaison officers. Line item, $185,000. I, I need to budget it somewhere. It does have to have a strand of numbers that, that implies the purpose. It, it could go in there, but upon the board approval of an amended budget at any point in time, I could, I could reclassify that under middle school sports, other programs that qualify again for these dollars. But by all means, I could, I could put it under that dollar amount, $385,000.
So, if we're in action, we could designate it there.
You could, but again, that does not require you, it doesn't, it doesn't bind you to pay, incur those expenditures. So...
Other questions, thoughts?
And Fund 80, pending board budget amendment, these dollars are basically just budgeted into Fund 80.
Correct.
Yeah. And, and I'm glad you thought of that, Chris, because now I'm in support of this, because the, we're not pigeonholing, we're not pigeonholing ourselves into school liaison officers, additional line or additional dollars into that 180. Could it go to that? I sure hope it does in some form or fashion, after board discussion and, and input from the chief at the department. So, yeah, now I'm in favor of it.
Fair enough. Other thoughts? All right. So, we have a motion and second to approve the proposed final budget, including an amount not to exceed $200,000 designated to Fund 80, community support, resulting in a levy of property taxes in the amount of $43,381,40 for a mill rate of $6.37 per $1,000 of assessed value on average across all municipalities and parcels. And thank you, everyone, for allowing me to read this several times. I just wanted to be sure I had this right for the minutes. So, we have a motion and second on the floor. Discussion being completed. I will call the roll. Mr. Repholz.
No.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Mrs. Zweigert votes yes. Mr. Angert.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt is absent. Mr. Donaldson.
Yes.
And Ms. Ergot. All right, that motion passes. Let's see, five to one. All right. Great discussion, everyone, and it feeds very, very nicely into our next steps as we talk about the, the work, the work session upcoming. All right, Andy, anything else on that item? All right, then.
No, thank you.
Because now we get to...
No, thank you.
Now, our next agenda item is school bus sale.
Isn't, isn't it appropriate to understand where commas should and should not be placed? There's no comma. Thank you. Thank you for the offer, sir. This, this is a, was a discussion item two weeks ago. Actually, I don't have an attachment, because looking at placing these four school buses that are relatively old and tired, but boy, could they find a great new home for the right price, listing them for two weeks on a public auction surplus website where we list all such assets, many municipalities. I was just down there the other day looking. You can see everything from gold coins to school desks to old, old tractors. So, a variety of items, looking for your approval to support the listing. By all means, I would report back to the school board in an appropriate manner upon a successful sale, just so you're, for your awareness. But looking for approval to list them.
Great. Any questions? Let's catch up on my paperwork here.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the listing of the four school buses, allowing the administration to proceed with the sale through a public online auction.
All right, second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion and second. Thank you, Melanie, for the second, to approve the listing of the four school buses and allowing the administration to proceed with the sale through public online auction. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Andy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, we're now on to revenues and expenditures in the aggregate. It is the Andy Show tonight.
This is the trifecta.
That's right.
Thank you. This, this is one of my favorite. I've, I've done this in prior districts. I, I really enjoy this. This has even evolved a little bit, where we have our monthly, monthly under the, oh, boy.
Consent.
Consent is the word I was looking for. Consent Agenda. Quarterly, we present the information. So, we've just completed, earlier at the end of last month, that through September 30th, the first quarter. But, so it's revenues and expenditures. This is in full disclosure, and we'll see as we scroll down to Fund 80, it does not reflect the 200,000 additional dollars that was added in the prior motion, two agenda items ago. But this is the budget as was originally presented. What this does is two things. Number one, it takes a look at this year's budget to actual through a point in time, which is through September, the first three months. It's only the first month of the school. So, it, it does get a little bit interesting there, especially considering those first payrolls for our hourly staff might not even hit until the end of that month with that delay. So, by fund, we take a look at the revenues and expenditures, budget to actual through that period of time. It also compares last year, last year's budget, the amended budget in the spring, through, again, that same period of time from July 1st through September 30th. And what we do is we look at variances. Are, are there any different differences, either this year, is there any, anything alarmingly high, or compared then to last year's activity at that same point in time? So, again, general fund, and this, this is where I get into that WUFAR, the, the chart of accounts that we have. We have a balanced budget that's from... We have a balanced budget that's been presented. We had a balanced budget at this point in time last year. In comparing this year's activity to last year's activity, I'm not seeing any large variances that we have that we need to be mindful of. As I've, I've noted, I think, for the last three years now, especially at the beginning of the year, we've been spending conservatively due to delays with, with procurement, even just people focusing on students, our staff and leadership who are in charge of budgets and spending, really focusing on students and just not spending at this point in time as of yet. Salary and benefit variances are in line with the payroll schedule compared to last year's activity. So again, general fund, which is our large, $80, $80 million of activity. Fund 21 is our gift fund. This was something that's been expanded over the last couple of years, and it really is driven by students. So this is all the clubs, all the activities. It might be a bake sale, but yet at the same time, it might be a large donation from a, a business or an individual in our community for a specific purpose, but this is all student dollars in Fund 21. We call it the gift fund, but this was one of the governmental accounting standards board's requirements. So we expanded this a couple of years ago. We're still navigating through how much activity there should be on, on a yearly basis. There are fluctuations in some of the activity where they raised money last year, spending it now, causing a deficit. But then again, they may be raising at some point in time. There might be a fundraiser at the year end that they don't plan on spending until next year. What we don't do is allow them to go in the negatives. They should always maintain a positive balance, plan appropriately for those revenues and funding sources for future year's activities. So there is a healthy fund balance, but this activity, again, it develops throughout the year for all those clubs, student, K-12, all buildings, all, all students. Fund 27 is our special education fund, approximately $15 million of activity. This is for, how I classify this, is a demographic of students receiving specialized services through their individualized education plans. So legally bound to provide these services in an effective and efficient manner. No variances they have at this point in time. Everything is trending as we would anticipate. We are at the point in time where we, we are starting to submit grant claims. Even just the other day, I was taking a look at our, one of our large grants flow through, and we've expensed a couple hundred thousand dollars. We're finally to the point where interest income, we can earn some revenue on that, and we need to make sure that we're timely with those grant claims. Similarly, we're the Head Start, countywide Head Start program. We operate that, million and a half dollars of activity. We, we, we need to have timely claims. Nothing at this point in time this year compared to last year. Final budget was just approved, making sure that we reflect that accurately, but we will be proceeding with, with claims because you can see a couple hundred thousand dollars of activity and that million and a half dollars of expenditure to date. Increase over the last couple of years due to additional COVID dollars, COVID-related dollars from additional federal funding, specifically in only for Head Start, but they're, they're working through and navigating that, making sure they're investing in those little students, younger students, I shouldn't say little younger. Fund 38 is our non-referendum fund. To date, the only activity is an interest payment as is scheduled, very similar to last year, but reduced because we only have one year left on this non-referendum debt. We make this year's principal and interest payments, and then next year, we have fund balance where we won't be needing this, which means it will repopulate because this is one of those funds that steals from our general fund in a sense. We're repaying that debt obligation. It's within the revenue limit. Fund 39, levying 1.0, excuse me, $6.1 million. The expenditure that you can see to date is only for principal and interest payments as is scheduled. Last year's activity, difficult to compare that because by this time last year, we'd refinanced one of the, one of the debt issues, causing a, a fluctuation in that. So when you take out that $9.6 million last year, we're right on par with where we were at that point in time with interest and principal payments. Anybody has any questions at any point in time, please feel free to jump in. Fund 41, which is one of our two, almost two and a half or three funds that we have designated for capital projects, capital expansion. As you can see, the budget, revenues, the 1.733 million, this was one of the binding resolutions that our annual meeting, those projects are completing accordingly. I know Mr. Ross and his team are trying to wrap up projects. They're holding off on some of those payments and with punch lists and some of those other activities. We did, as a part of the budget, increase. We slid over from Fund 10 to Fund 41, some additional expenditures per the discussion we had last, two weeks ago. But again, there's fund balance available to be utilized for that. Fund 46 is that capital improvement trust. That was the one that there's the five-year, five-year waiting period, that I think we're two or three years beyond that. The only activity at this point in time that you'll see is the revenue, way outperforming last year. There's fund balance that exists there. It's earning interest in a, in a good kind of way. We'll continue to monitor that and maximize that revenue source, but no expenditures at this point in time. And then no activity in Fund 49. I'd always disclose that because this is where the $540,000 Barton sale proceeds lie, and at, at some point in time, we may choose to use those where they would show up as an expenditure in some, at some point in time in the future. Fund 50 is our nutritional services fund. Mr. Dembski, our new food service director, is doing wonderful, taking a look at making sure that our participation is, is where it can be after a month of school, what our staff to meal ratio looks like, we're monitoring that. We're staffed okay at this point in time. Food is costing a fair amount of money, so as we talked back in, in, in the spring and into the summer and setting those meal prices, just really monitoring that activity to make sure there is a fair amount of fund balance that exists. We do need a spend plan, so at some point in time, this will be operating at a deficit, but we'll disclose that information to you, what they're investing those dollars in. So we'll make sure that we share that. Fund 73 is our other post, other post-employment benefit trust fund. This is where all of our retiree health and other benefits are, lie, have a fund balance that exists. At this point in time, we're projecting what those health insurance costs might be for this population of former employees, but relatively on par with where it was last year, except again, interest income is outperforming, we're greatly outperforming where we have been. So really, really appreciating that. Where interest costs when you borrow money is more expensive. We're not short-term borrowing this year, so we have the ability to read these benefits. Expenditures, as I mentioned, are on par with prior years, with a slight increase that we anticipated due to increased health insurance cost. Fund 80, this budget, when you see it next time, we make sure that this, again, comes during consent. Next month, we'll update that $200,000 in an appropriate category, which is a purchase service, but on par, middle school sports are proceeding. Payment to the municipality, to the West Bend Police Department will be coming very soon for that contract. Last one that just barely started last year, I think it was a $300, $300 registration fee for a hockey tournament, but hockey is upon us. The increase in the budget is because they're, they continue to have more and more participating athletes. This is reconciled at year-end, so if they only spend $96,000, the budget, as we amend it in the spring, would reflect $96,000. Any surplus money is returned to the home districts of those students since it's a cooperative. If there was a deficit, we would ask for a little bit more money again to reconcile with those expenditures, but I know Ms. Felber and I and Julie Marks in my department monitor this activity pretty closely. So that's the budget in a nutshell, as well as the activity to date through three months of our fiscal year, one month of the school year. Really do enjoy being able to present this because it shows how much attention we look for in monitoring the activity to make sure that we're in line.
And I appreciate the walkthrough. It sounds like, as you said several times, there are no variances that concern you or out of ordinary, so to speak.
Correct.
Any questions for Andy on the revenues and expenses in the aggregate? Hearing none, I would move to accept the 2022, 2023 fiscal year revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through September 30th, 2022, as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joel. Motion and second to approve the revenues and expenditures in the aggregate. Any final discussion?
We don't, we don't have to update with the 200,000 in there, in that motion?
I, no, I, I will make sure that that's reflected.
Because it's approved, because it just says as presented, which obviously, you know, it can go either way. I just don't want to...
Oh, fair, fair point. I think this is through September 30th, right?
It is the, this is, thank you for that. This is the activity, monitoring the activity, not necessarily the budget, so I would be in agreement with it.
Different category, yeah. Understand your point, John. It's a good question.
For bringing, yeah, great question.
Yeah, just the time, I mean, this cuts off at September 30th.
Correct.
So, great, good question. All right, we have a motion and second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have one discussion item tonight, and that is student out-of-state travel for a German, and Dr. Jill Reese, welcome back to the podium, and you'll walk us through this item.
Thank you. I actually have Corey Petzel here, who's going to walk you through the trip. This is a trip for the German club, and it's a one-day event, and he will be here to explain it and answer questions. Corey?
Thanks for your time this evening. Unlike last time I was up here, I was proposing an 11-day trip across, across an ocean. I'm just proposing a one-day trip down to Chicago this time. But you guys might be happy to know that our trip to Germany has 35 students signed up right now, and they're really, really excited for the opportunity that you've given them and that our school's given them. So I think both of these field trips that I'm proposing, or the trip to Germany and this, the one to Chicago, really shows how critical culture is and part of our language acquisition and how excited students get for opportunities like this. So I did kind of poll students, and I, almost all of the students are interested in going to this German Christmas market, the Chris Kindle Mart. And we, we've been kind of seeing them pop up around the area, too. I know there's one in Oconomowoc and things like that, but in downtown Chicago, they really try to create an authentic German Christmas market down there with vendors from Germany. The students can buy German foods, German gifts, and hopefully even interact with the vendors in German as well. So I'm really just looking for your support in being able to take the students for this cultural, cultural trip down there. I do definitely have it connected to our, our curriculum and our state standards in terms of cultural comparisons, and hopefully it can be a really memorable activity for them, but as well, it's an opportunity to get outside and to have fun, like Superintendent Wimmer said at our opening in-service, it's an opportunity for our students to, to travel with their, their friends and learn outside of the classroom.
Great. So this is a discussion item, so we'll take action on this perhaps next time. I've been to this, and I'm not sure if anyone else has, but this would be a great experience for kids, and so I'm definitely in favor of this. We'll, we'll obviously talk about it next time. It's also at the Daily Plaza. If anyone is interested in a career in law, that's also the courthouse, and it's kind of a neat place to visit as well, but Chris Kindle is excellent, and they should have no problem interacting with other individuals who speak German as their native language.
Will it be for all levels?
Yeah, I'll propose it for all levels. I just got kind of interest because I need to figure out how much the busing and stuff would cost, but almost, I would say 90% of the students, so it's about, it's about 100 students that would be interested in it. So I just got to kind of measure that with how much a bus would cost and stuff like that, but the, I did get a quote from Badger Bus, and they have a double-decker bus that has about 80 people on it, so should, should fit our budget pretty good there.
Awesome.
Great. All right, I think we'll be inviting you back next time to consider this as, for, for an action item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, that takes us to future agenda items in our board meeting calendar, and on our calendar, as I pull it up here, we have two policy committee meetings scheduled,